2018, if you'll all please arise and repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And nobody noticed that the nameplates were changed because we were all busy repeating the pledge?
I asked Rita who I was gonna be today.
I didn't see any minutes, so we'll move on to item number two, open seal bids for hauling of up to 600 tons of LM CRS, number two, chip seal oil road department. Commissioners, we have received one bid on this from Basin Western Inc. And it is for 25 minimum ton loads would be forty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents per ton, and thirty-five ton minimum loads would be forty dollars and twenty-five cents a ton.
Can you repeat those one more time?
So for a 25-ton minimum load, it'd be forty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents per ton, and for a 35-ton minimum load, it's forty dollars and twenty-five cents per ton.
That was the only bid?
Correct.
I'll make a motion that we acknowledge that bid and turn that over to Daniel in the road shop for review and awarding of that.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number three, open sealed bids for up to 3,000 ton of U.DOT spec hot mix asphalt road department. We received one bid on this as well from Nelson Construction. It is 3,000 ton at sixty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents a ton, total extended price 204,750 dollars. It's 204,750.
Make the motion to acknowledge the bid and to turn it over for review at the road shop so that we can make sure that it meets all the specs necessary for our projects.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Since we're working off the worksheet today, item number five, presentation by...
Number four, Commissioner.
Excuse me, item number four, I skipped one. Open sealed bids for contract public defender services in the Seventh District Judicial District and Juvenile Courts of Carbon County and the Carbon County Justice Court. Yeah, we received two on this. The first is from Torgerson Law Offices. Says the proposal is, "In lieu of the previous contract structure, we propose to service the caseload David Allred previously handled for a monthly rate of fourteen thousand dollars in addition to each of our existing public defender agreements. In essence, we propose to replace the former system with a more balanced and managed public defender system as follows. Torgerson Law Offices, Oliver and Citrid will equally divide the District Court caseload resulting in an allocation of cases that's more in line with national recommendations for public defenders rather than a single attorney handling a crushing caseload of at least 350 felonies. Torgerson Law Offices will continue to represent clients in the felony drug court and handle all appellate work according to its current agreement with the county. Torgerson Law Offices will also handle any third place conflicts for Oliver and Citrid. Oliver and Citrid will continue to service the conflict parental defender contract and any third place conflicts with Torgerson Law Offices. And Blackburn Law Offices will handle the Carbon County Justice Court caseload appointments, juvenile court delinquency cases, and first place conflicts for Torgerson Law Offices and Oliver and Citrid. Mr. Blackburn will also continue to service his parental defense cases according to his current agreement with the county. Our proposal reduces the problems that inherently arise when one public defender handles a caseload as large as Carbon County's. It permits a more constitutional and effective defense for Carbon County's indigent defendants." Each of us resides in Carbon County and has our primary offices in Carbon County and is available to meet with clients at our offices and at the jail promptly after appointment by the court. We also maintain adequate staff to assist with administering a significant caseload. Between us, we have approximately 30 years of combined experience practicing in local courts, and we all have significant criminal defense practices. We're committed to improving the public defender system in the county to ensure that the clients we serve are all well represented, and we have a good history of working well with the Carbon County Attorney and providing high-quality representation to the clients we serve. We recognize that our proposal would increase the public defender budget by eight thousand four hundred dollars per month. The additional funds will increase the per-case rate for district court matters from approximately $130 per case to approximately $345 per case. That amount is below the national guidelines and is well below the average for the other counties in the Seventh District Court, but we believe it is fair compensation for the current caseload. Signed, Torgerson Law Offices, Don Torgerson, Blackburn Law Office, Travis Blackburn, and Oliver and Citrid LLC by Robert Oliver.
And Commissioners, I know that's not the only bid we're going to open, but Robert Oliver is here, and he has asked if he could briefly speak to you about the bid for just a moment after this next bid's opened. Because I had a total then of fourteen thousand per month then.
Fourteen thousand in addition to current contracts, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The total, what it says here, the total, it would increase the public defender budget would be eight thousand four hundred per month, because we already have...
Beyond what we've previously paid.
The next one... Is from Mark Tanner. "Pursuant to your request for proposal regarding public defender services, I make the following proposal: For the sum of eleven thousand dollars per month, I will support with my firm and provide those legal services outlined in the written agreement to provide criminal public defense representation published by the county in conjunction with the proposals. In fulfilling this contract, I will have the support of my office, which currently includes another attorney, and a clerk/investigator who is also a former law enforcement officer with experiments for criminal investigations and investigations for a large commercial retailer, as well as having earned a JD degree. I will also have the backing of clerical staff and support for research and calendaring support." Since I read the other one, I'm just gonna finish reading this one too. "Personally, personally, I will provide the principal representation, will appear in court and personally meet clientele as required by the agreement, and I will use my staff as support for the investigation, research, and logistics required to professionally address the legal needs of those clients in the three courts identified. I will maintain an office at 80 East, 100 South in Price, which will be staffed by a secretary/receptionist at all regular business hours, and will provide a place to meet clients away from the courthouse as contemplated by the agreement. I will maintain regular office hours in Price in order to be conveniently accessible to my clients. With the current caseload demand for the Carbon County public defender, I don't believe the requirements of Section 77-32-301 can be met without the support I am offering in my proposal. I contemplate this position to be a full-time, to be full-time for me and still require assistance as set forth herein. I believe that at least two of you know me personally. I've practiced criminal law locally for over 20 years, and I am very well acquainted with the courts, court and prosecution, office, personnel, judges, and prosecutors in the Seventh District Court. I believe I have proved myself as professional, capable, ethical, competent, cordial, and capable. I work well with others, and while I am vigorous in the representation of my clients and in maintaining the integrity of the court system, my clients' individual constitutional rights, I seek to resolve rather than insight. Outside of the practice of law, I have demonstrated the spirit of community, service, and involvement. I have served many years in various capacities at the Boy Scouts of America, and I've also worked with youth programs in the area. I've assisted my wife in the service to the community through her mortuary, and I've been active in my religious congregations. I appreciate your consideration for my proposal. I believe that the county, as well as the indigent criminal defendants in the Seventh District Court and in Carbon County will benefit by your acceptance of this proposal. Very truly yours, Mark Tanner."
I'll go ahead and make a motion to acknowledge that we've received those two requests and that we'll need to meet as a commission to make any final decision or awarding of that contract after we review them.
And I'll go ahead and second that motion, that we acknowledge those and reconvene amongst ourselves later to make that decision. So basically, I'm seconding the decision, the motion made.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Mr. Oliver, did you want to speak to this?
Basically, just briefly, I don't want to take the Commission's, too much of the Commission's time, but me and Mr. Torgerson, and Mr. Blackburn, and Mr. Citrid, we've spent some considerable time coming up with our proposal. And probably, if not, public, I think our public defender system here in this county is... I don't want to say broken, but I think it needs something to be done to fix it. Me and Mr. Torgerson have talked about this a lot and done a lot of research that went into our proposal. This isn't the first time I've been here talking about this contract, as you guys are aware. And I've had Commissioners come to me saying that they would have liked more information before they made a decision. So I wanted to just take some time to give you some information. I know we've submitted a letter to the Commission that I think you guys have got. Is that accurate? Mr. Allred did a great service to this county, and he probably wasn't compensated well enough. I have the last contract that Mr. Allred signed with the county. The last one I had was 2008, and it was the same amount that he's being paid today. It hasn't went up. That's why there's such a great cost increase in our proposals today. Additionally, Mr. Allred was servicing about 500 district court cases. The national guidelines say that a public defender should service about 150 felony cases a year. Mr. Allred was over 350 felony cases and 500 district court cases, well above the national guidelines. The national guidelines basically show that after 150 cases a year, you're no longer effective as a public defender. And part of my passion is providing great criminal defense. That's what I love to do. And me and Mr. Torgerson have got together and come up with a vast majority of this proposal, along with Mr. Blackburn. Our proposal, it seems a little complicated if you read it, and that's why I wanted to just clarify a few things. It would essentially be me, Mr. Blackburn, and Mr. Torgerson taking over Dave's contract load, Mr. Allred's contract load, because 500 cases is too much for one person. Mr. Tanner, I don't know if Mr. Tanner's here tonight or today, but Mr. Tanner's proposal would essentially be just replacing Dave. He would be stepping in for Dave. He'd still have that same crushing caseload, and I don't think it would improve our system at all. Our proposal seeks to improve our system in a way that one guy is not taking the entire caseload and being crushed by it. Instead, we're dividing that caseload amongst three people, and we would handle conflicts amongst ourselves. Our whole goal is to bring a public defender system into the county rather than just simply a public defender contract. It is a little more expensive, based on Mr. Tanner's proposal, but I think with that, the county gets assurances that it's providing better public defender services to its citizens. I know Mr. Tanner says he has an office here, but...
Commissioners, let me just interrupt Mr. Oliver right here. I'm a little concerned that we didn't advertise that we were gonna be comparing the bids, per se. And so, and I should've said this before you started talking, Oliver. I guess my thought would be is, I think you ought to limit what the information from Mr. Oliver just to clarifying his bid rather than comparing it with Mr. Tanner's, since Mr. Tanner's not really here tonight to speak for himself and in defense of it. So my suggestion would be that Mr. Oliver simply clarify maybe any questions you might have as to his bid rather than seek to contrast it with Mr. Tanner's.
And I can do that. The biggest point of clarification I wanted to make was, it's 14,000 to cover Mr. Allred's portion, his caseload. So as Commissioner Mellor stated, it would be 14,000 in addition to the contracts we already do hold. So it'd increase the budget by eight thousand four hundred per month. But we'd be dividing Mr. Allred's caseload among three attorneys, among myself, Mr. Blackburn, and Mr. Torgerson, to alleviate some of the concerns about too tremendous of a caseload for one person.
So, Robert, let me ask a question. So for example, so you would each equally take, you would each equally take cases, right? In other words, the district court would assign them to you numerically? So if Mr. Torgerson got one first, then perhaps Oliver and Citrid would be next? If you had a conflict, however, then the second place conflicts I'm hearing is Mr. Blackburn?
Correct.
It would go to him? If Mr. Blackburn, let's say it was Mr. Blackburn's time to be appointed, if he had a conflict, it would then go to Mr. Torgerson?
Correct.
So we keep the same system of conflicts?
Correct.
We just simply rotate the primary case assignment between the three firms?
And then we've also anticipated me and Mr. Torgerson taking the district court cases. Mr. Blackburn would take over the justice court cases, as well as the juvenile court cases. So it's not just one person taking all of those cases? Because right now, Mr. Allred took district court, justice court, juvenile court, everything for one person. So we would equally divide that amongst the three attorneys, the three law firms?
So would not, so justice court and juvenile court would not be, those would all go to Mr. Blackburn initially?
Those would all go to Mr. Blackburn.
Okay, but the district court cases would all go to primarily just the two, just to Mr. Torgerson and Oliver and Citrid?
That's correct.
And rotate between the two of you?
Yeah.
And then again, the conflicts would still be the same as before? Conflict assignment?
Yeah, as you stated, it would go in that way. We would basically, the conflict contracts that are in existence now would basically be assumed by this contract, and we would still manage those conflicts.
Okay, I think I understand how.
Clarification as well, the juvenile, like DCFS cases, which are not criminal, well, I would still be servicing that with...
With Mr. Blackburn.
That contract would remain unchanged?
Well, I think when we talk about juvenile cases, when Mr. Allred was talking about that, it would be criminal.
Delinquency cases.
Sure, yeah.
That's correct. But that's basically what I wanted to clarify. We would still maintain our office as Oliver and Citrid here in Price. Mr. Blackburn still has his office here in Price, and Mr. Torgerson would still maintain his office here in Price. We would all still have our staff, our staff members that we have, we all have full-time staff, and we would all still take appointments at our offices here in Price. And as a matter of clarification, I think that's all I have to clarify. The only suggestion, I don't know if you guys take suggestions, but the only suggestion I would make is if Mr. Tanner, if we could possibly put it on the next agenda, allow Mr. Tanner a chance to come here so we could possibly contrast the different practitioners, I think that would be helpful.
Okay, we'll definitely consider that, but we can go forward from here. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Appreciate the information.
Item number five, presentation by Operation Underground Railroad regarding their program, Deanna Barlow.
Good afternoon. My name is Deanna Barlow, and I am the Price Utah area team lead for an organization that is called OUR, which is short for Operation Underground Railroad. This team is new to the area, so my purpose here today is just to introduce you to OUR, what we are and what we do. And I do need to let you know that I'm here in a volunteer capacity today and not as a spokesman for OUR. OUR was founded in 2013 by a man named Tim Ballard, who is former Homeland Security. And I have a video that I want to show you today that will help you know who OUR is, and you will hear Tim Ballard speaking. As I pull this up, I do want to tell you that OUR is a nonprofit organization.
These kids are in hell. We've seen things that you couldn't imagine would even happen in hell. The only way to get to those kids is you've got to go in there. You've got to willingly go in there and not flinch while you're there. We have made huge strides this year. We're probably close to double the countries we're working in and the partners, both on the operations side and the rehab side. Sometimes we are asked by government officials to come into an area, and they say, "Look, we don't have specific intelligence, but we know that stuff's happening in this neighborhood." Our operators will go and watch, pretending to be like the other tourists, looking for illicit contact with kids. Other times, it's very specific. There's this child who was taken. One of the great accomplishments this year is our SETCO, our Child Exploitation Targeting Center of Excellence. Amazing tools that will help law enforcement all around the world to find children who are being exploited. A lot of what we are doing now is targeting pedophiles and traffickers using tools that allow us to exploit places on the internet where these kids are being sold. In 2016, one of our highlights is the expansion and growth of our aftercare program. We hired a new director of rehab, Jessica Mass, who just does an amazing job. She's partnered with rehab places, facilities, shelters. We've recognized that the families so often are part of the problem, and they can't go back. And so we have to have a place that's a home for them, a place where they can receive an education, the healing they need. We have to be ready to accept the fact that some of these kids, they're gonna be in this rehabilitation center up until the point that they're gonna apply to college out of there and then have a life. We've already seen more rescues and arrests as we did last year. It's gonna take a long time, but with enough support and with enough growth, I do believe that we can eradicate this.
So, at the end of that, you saw the 2016 report numbers. Right here, you see that in the past four years, they have actually done amazing things. They have rescued 990 victims and arrested more than 440 through traffickers worldwide. Now, you might be saying, "What does that have to do with Carbon County?" Well, this is a worldwide program, not program, problem. This is a worldwide problem, and I'm hoping that as we bring some education to that here in our area, that we will better be able to protect our children and have conversations with them about what trafficking looks like and how to protect themselves. The operations are run by a jump team who consists mostly of ex-military and law enforcement agency people. And as you saw, the aftercare program is a vital part of their organization. And that's where most of the money that we raise as a team goes, is to keep the kids there in the aftercare programs because they cannot go home. So what's our purpose here in Price? Our purpose is twofold. First, education and awareness, and I've talked a little bit about that. But that will take the form of booths at places like International Days and the craft fairs. And it will also be talking to businesses and groups about human trafficking and how to recognize it and what we can do to help it. A year and a half ago, I had no idea that human trafficking was such a big problem, both in the US and in the world. And if we don't know about something, we can do nothing to change it. And two, our second purpose for being here in Price would be events and fundraising. The Price Utah team wants to bring things to Carbon County that will bring value here to our citizens. Some of the events that we have talked about are to bring a clean comedian here that families can go and spend a night listening to a comedian, and the proceeds from the ticket sales would then be given on to OUR to benefit and help with their... To help them. The second is to bring a shooting contest to the Carbon County gun range. And again, those proceeds from that would go to help OUR. So what do we need? Number one thing I need is lots of help. I need ideas. I recognize that there are a lot of people in this room that have been here in Carbon County longer than I have. You understand the people here. You understand the way things work. You know what will work here and what won't. So I am so open to having you say, "Hey, you know, I was thinking about this. Why don't you try it?" Second thing I need is, I'm looking for sponsors that can help to bring these good things to Carbon County. So ideas on where to go for that, or anyone in the audience that might be listening on YouTube that would like to get involved with that, please contact me. The third thing I need is more volunteers. Right now, I have eight. I have eight team members, and I would love to see that that number grow to 20, 25, and upwards from there. I would like to just let you know, as Commissioners, that if there is something in Carbon County that the Price Utah OUR team can help with, we would be glad to do that. I feel it's important that we support each other in the community and the things that we're trying to accomplish. I'll open it to any questions you might have for me at this point. I'm fairly new to OUR, so if I don't have the answer for you, I'll find it.
How long have you been with OUR?
Well, about nine months. About nine months. And we have just started, I think November was our first team, team meeting. So, and we actually did that at Jake's insurance office. So thank you, Jake.
One, one of the other resources I think we have is definitely great law enforcement with the sheriff's office. And I know that Sheriff Wood has a real interest in the youth and, you know, the community at large. So, not that I'm volunteering him, but I think that that's one of those other resources that you didn't mention. That definitely has the ability to say, hey, here are some things that could happen or could work in that process.
Sheriff Wood, could I come have a conversation with you?
I, I would also promote that you reach out to the university. I know that they already have some type of awareness program in regards to human trafficking. And I think that your organization would fit well with what they're attempting to do and that you may be able to coordinate something there.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions?
I don't have any. I don't have any. Thank you.
We appreciate your presentation.
Thank you very much for allowing me to be here.
Thank you.
This is an O U R pamphlet that just has some more information on it. If anyone in the audience would like one, I can hand those out too. Thank you, commissioners, for allowing me to take time today.
You bet. Thank you. I would tell you, give those for sure to the media here. That will also help you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six, possible consideration, consideration and possible award of bid for Wellington and Price River improve, water improvement district, Bart Jensen.
Good evening. I'm Bart Jensen with Jones and DeMeo Engineering, project manager for the Wellington Prywide E W P or Emergency Watershed Protection Project. Been working with the, the county, Wellington City and Prywide over the last approximately nine months in conjunction with the N R C S on this project. Just to give you a brief overview, this project is funded by the N R C S with a seventy-five percent grant, twenty-five percent sponsor match. Carbon County is, is the sponsor on this and so the grant portion of that project is around two point one million dollars with a grant or with an in-kind match from the county of six hundred thousand dollars. And that, that in-kind match will be made up from rock and soil materials coming out of a free use B L M permit from, it's called the Farnham Dome Pit located southeast of Wellington. This project was estimated, and when, when they were coming up with the grant funding, it was kind of split into two phases, if you will, one being Wellington path, one being Prywide half. And we bid it out as one, or, or we, we have two separate bids, but we're going to, we're going to combine those two bids to award one single prime contract due to the logistics of mining the rock and, and things for, for both phases of the project. So we solicited bids, held a mandatory pre-bid meeting, had a, a, a very great deal of interest in the project. Total of twenty-three individual prime contractors showed up to that pre-bid meeting and, and the site visit. We had nine prime bidders turn in bids yesterday to the county clerk's office. And those bids were opened and read aloud. And we have evaluated those and found each bid to be responsive based on our review. And you should have a tabulation of those bids in hand. I apologize I didn't get them to you sooner for review. There was a lot of numbers and a lot of documents to go through. So, it's split into two. The top portion is Wellington, is the Wellington bids. The bottom portion is the Prywide bid. The basis of our bid was the total combined prices from, of both bids from each contractor. You can see the first column is our engineer's estimate, this, and then the second through the ninth, or, I guess, second through the tenth column, or each of the contractors pricing. So I guess without going into too many details, the, the, the low bidder was Feller Enterprises out of St. George for a total of one million, six hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. Next was Harvard and Reese out of Lower, Loa, Utah for an amount of one million, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty cents. Next was Nelco Contractors from Price, Utah for a total of two million, two hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ten cents. Bear in mind that these are, some of these totals are corrected based on the evaluation of the bids. There were some minor rounding errors and a few things like that that we, we corrected based on our, our instructions and bidding documents. Next, we have M K Whedon Construction out of Lewistown, Montana with a total of two million, five hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety cents. Next was W W Clyde out of Warren, Utah. Total of two million, six hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars. Next was Torres Plumbing and Excavating out of Nephi, Utah. Total of two million, nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty cents. Next was Brown Brothers out of Loa, Utah. The total price of three million, thirty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-three cents. Next was Knife River out of American Fork, Utah for a total of three million, two hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and five cents. And last was Terry R. Brotherson out of Mount Pleasant, Utah for a total of four million, six hundred and eighty-one thousand, seventeen dollars and eight cents. As I mentioned, we reviewed all the bids and found them to be substantially complete. And so there was no disqualified bids. The low bidder was Feller Enterprises. And I would just mention that we have a, we have a tight timeline on this project and they're looking forward to getting going on that. And based on our review, we'd recommend to the commission to award the, the project to the lowest bidder, which is Feller Enterprises.
There are a couple of questions that I do have. My understanding is where this is E U P money, that really that option of any other bids to be considered, it has to be the lowest bid based on the federal dollars. Is that correct?
That's, yes, that's our experience when dealing with federal contracting and the, the regulations regarding federal contracting are very specific that way.
And the second one is, is Carbon County is the sponsor and in a year when we have had budget discussions and so forth, it needs to be recognized that that match is not only what you've stated there, Mr. Jensen, but also the fact that this is direct responsibility with Wellington City and with the Water District.
Yes, so, excuse me, the, it is split into the two phases. However, the, the free use pit that is providing the rock and the, and the soil materials, the N R C S as part of this program allows that to be an in-kind match. So there, we don't anticipate there being out of, out of pocket or, or cash put up for that. So.
Correct.
There, and there's, and we actually in our, in our estimates, we, we're, we're well beyond the, the match amount that we need to provide for that. So we're, we're feeling very comfortable that that, we've got plenty of cushion there. So.
Just, just want to make sure that, you know, the public understands that, that again, that this is a non-cash budget item that does not affect or change the two thousand and eighteen budget.
Correct.
And do you have any workings with Feller Enterprises? Do they have, are they adequate? I mean, their bid is fairly low even to the engineer's estimate. You're comfortable with their, their ability to complete the work?
Yeah, now, I haven't personally worked with them, but several other project managers in my firm have worked with them on, on multiple other projects throughout the state, specifically E W P projects for the N R C S. And they, I, I've heard nothing but praise about their work and their, their workmanship. And I called them today to just, to just let them know that we do have a tight timeline and make sure that they are prepared to, to get going and, and get it done in that timeframe without anticipating any time extensions whatsoever. And they said they were. So we, we, we do feel comfortable with recommending them.
Okay. Any further questions?
Doesn't seem like we have a lot of choice in the matter as subject to the federal money restrictions that we are. I'll go ahead and make the motion to award the contract to the lowest bidder as required, which is Feller Enterprises.
I'll second that.
You have a motion. I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven, consideration and possible approval of a request for defer delinquent property taxes. Mr. Broadbank.
I don't know if Mr. Broadbank is here. I don't know if Seth would like to speak to that. Kay is not here tonight either.
Commissioners, Mr. Broadbank is not, not here. We did receive some correspondence from his family. And those, those letters, I know at least one of them was in your packet. One of them came very shortly before. One correction to the letter, one of the, the statements in one of those letters stated that, that the abatement program had been applied in other counties to prior years' taxes. That is, that is not allowed for the circuit breaker tax credit or the engine tax credit. The only, the way that they, that an abatement could have happened was, would be a commission adjustment to the taxes for prior years. The other programs, it's in the guidelines, you, you can't go back to prior years. So just as a, as a clarification in that letter, I do think that the family, you know, poses a, a serious, there, there is a, a serious need there and whether or not he would have qualified for a, a circuit breaker tax credit in the past, since he never, an application was never provided. He, he didn't receive those. I think in the past, we have tried to work with it when it's the primary residence of, of any individual. We've tried as hard as we can to work with those as long as they're making some sort of progress. In the, in the packet, the treasurer's provided, the, the payment history, there have been no payments made. So if any sort of deferral or arrangement were, were, you know, arranged with the family to, to get those taxes current, they'd have to start making some sort of monthly payments to, a plan to get back into compliance with that. But the commission does have the power to defer the taxes. I, I would not recommend just removing them, but an extension of time or deferral of time would be consistent with what we've done in the past for hardship cases. That's all I have to add.
And commissioners, I just handed you the statute that outlines the discretion you have under fifty-nine dash two dash thirteen forty-seven. That's all set forth under one A indicates how you can grant a deferral as well as retroactive adjustments or deferrals. If in your judgment, the best human interests and the interests of the state and the county are served. So it gives you broad discretion there to, to make adjustments either by adjusting the, the sum of the amount due or by deferring taxes. I know, I do believe there have been times when you have typically the policy has been when you have granted an adjustment of the amounts, what you've generally done is waived interest or waived penalty or a portion of those or a portion of both of those. I don't know that I can specifically recall times where you've waived the actual principal amount due, but you have waived penalty and interest and, and allowed for a payment on a deferred schedule. I don't know if Kay Klosman was sent, given you any recommendations on this tonight. I don't have any such recommendations from her. Just wanted you to be aware that you do have some discretion legally there to make, to make adjustments. The total amount due on this is four thousand, five hundred and six fifty-one, of which five hundred and thirty-two sixty-five is a interest and ninety-six ninety-one is penalty. There, there were some payments made in two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve. They do not appear that they were, well, excuse me, those were payments in full, but there was nothing made in thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, or seventeen. And that's really the only information that the treasurer's office provided. In the past, we have done, like you suggested, you know, made arrangements. This does appear to be from our investigation of primary resident, residents with a resident who is struggling with age and some health issues. And so I, I think that that, in my opinion, for me, weighs into, you hate to see someone lose their home, but we do have to, you know, move forward with, you know, some type of a, a plan or a program.
Well, we usually make allowances for extenuating circumstances that otherwise don't fit into the normal rule. And as Commissioner Potter mentioned, I, I don't, I am unaware of any reason for a, a, any such extenuating circumstances. As, as you mentioned, he's not living in, in this particular property.
He is.
No, he is living in this property.
He is living in this property.
Then maybe. That's interesting. What, what are your thoughts? Where were you going before I interrupted?
I just was bringing that information out for, for the discussion based on the information that I had gathered.
As far as communication, Seth, you mentioned that I see one email in the packet to Kay. Whether, what was the other communication from the family? I don't have that in my packet.
It was in an email sent to us.
Rita received an email from the daughter-in-law and had provided us that. And it's just a letter stating the condition of her father-in-law, some of the extenuating circumstances and asking for, you know, consideration. No plan or anything was put forward as far as, you know, what the family could do. But that's basically that, the letter that was forwarded to us that came in today from them. And I guess in looking at it, I, I, I would be more than willing to consider, commissioners, again, we can discuss it further that we can defer this, but I would ask that the current year taxes be made brought current and that a payment plan be established with the clerk's office, or excuse me, with the treasurer's office to, you know, bring the account current. Based on the amount, I'm, I did not have a plan as to whether that would be in a twelve-month period or longer, but in the past, we've said, you know, bring the current year current, bring the current amount current and then, you know, work out that payment plan over a given period of time. And I, and I think that that would be appropriate where he lives in the, the residence and it is primary residence. That if the family can help him get back on his feet that way, I think it is a great service in regards to letting someone stay in their home.
I would be comfortable with an arrangement like that if, if the family had, think we need to reach out to them and see if they're willing to do that, if they can make the current year payment and then get on a payment plan. See what they can do as far as a payment plan and to make up the past years.
According to this letter that Rita provided me, there are extenuating circumstances. So I would agree with both of you that we do allow for him to make up this year's taxes through support of his family or by whatever other means. And then that he set up a payment plan. Now, that payment plan would be with the treasurer's office, right?
Correct.
Okay. And that it, as long as that payment plan is satisfactory to the treasurer, that we allow him to continue forward.
So, I guess my, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I was just going to ask if that was a motion?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
And, and I would put just one substitute item in there, and that is, is that that would be the two. And, and I would put just one substitute item in there, and that is, is that that would be the two thousand seventeen year's taxes current, not the eighteen's, which have not gone out.
Okay. Do you, uh, accept that as a?
Substitute motion, yes.
Or, or a friendly to your motion?
Sure.
Okay, we have a motion?
And then I would, I would second that.
And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And so, so just to clarify, that motion was, um, that he come, um, up, up to date and current with his twenty-seventeen-year taxes, and that he get on a payment plan that is satisfactory for the treasurer, to come do with everything else that is owed?
Commissioners, there's one concern, a- and that is that any, well, let's see, any amounts paid have to be pla- pay, are first applied to
Twenty seventeen. To, to the newest year first.
Right. So, okay, so, and those taxes are not due till the end of November, right? Is my understanding. The two thousand seventeen taxes.
Should have already been paid. We're in twenty eighteen.
So you're saying, okay, any, uh, any amount, any agreement will have to include him getting those current year's taxes done first?
Correct.
Okay. I got it.
The two thousand seventeen taxes.
The two thousand seventeen taxes.
The two thousand eighteen taxes would be due in November.
And they're not yet due, yeah, so.
Okay.
Um, and I, and I guess we would just need to be sure that, um, the treasurer's office, that Kay's informed of that, and that those details get worked out.
Okay. Item number eight, consideration of possible approval of ordinance number four ninety, revised business license ordinance.
Commissioners, you will not have had much of a chance to review this yet. Uh, this, these proposed changes to this ordinance, uh, are as follows. And I don't know if you've got a copy there in front of you. Um, what they propose are that, uh, you begin to impose a fee for short-term rentals. Short-term rentals are defined in, in this proposal to the, um, Business License Code as the renting to any person who's not the original, who's not the record owner of title. His dwelling, whether it's a cabin or anything, any kind of residential dwelling, uh, for a period of time of less than twenty-nine consecutive calendar days. So if it's being leased to anybody for fewer than twenty-nine consecutive days for their occupancy or use, um, then that's to be deemed as a short-term rental, and it, and it imposes a hundred-dollar business license fee for each such dwelling place, for each such residential building, uh, that they might let out. Um, so it does not, uh, many counties have put restrictions on where short-term rentals can take place. This proposal does not propose any restrictions on short-term rentals in area, any area. It simply requires that they obtain a business license. It also requires that they agree to pay the transient room taxes imposed, that, uh, are imposed by state law on any kind of thing i- already. That they agree to sign a statement indicating that they'll pay those transient room taxes, and that for next year's renewal, they provide copies of their transient room tax return. Um, it also provides that, uh, home-based businesses, which by law now, if those home-based businesses, if the, uh, traffic from those businesses does not exceed basically the traffic that would otherwise be coming into the area because of those home-based businesses. Um, it provides that those home-based businesses do not need to pay a business license fee. It also provides that, that, uh, the county clerk is the person to make that determination as to the impact of those. But if the county clerk, uh, believes that the person is not entitled to a home-based business exemption, then he is re- to refer the matter to you for a final determination. So in other words, he can grant exemptions to the home-based business, um, or grant those ex- uh, it's not really an exemption. I guess it's a rec- recognition of the exception to the business license fee. If he decides they're not entitled to them, he's to refer them to you for a final determination. So that everybody gets a fair, that, that ensures that anybody gets a, uh, an appeal, as it were, to you if, before they're denied for that. Um, and it also provides that short-term rentals are not home-based businesses, because those are not part of the, uh, I don't believe that was the intent of that statute, to provide the short-term rentals act as be deemed to be home-based businesses. Uh, so those are the changes, uh, that I've drafted for your consideration. I don't know. You may want more time to review those or look at them, but, um, I've, I've, uh, developed those after talking to some of you individually, as well as to, uh, Seth, our, our clerk auditor. And I don't know if Seth wanted to comment on that, but, uh, we're, the, the purpose of this is to bring our business license ordinance into, uh, into conformity with state statute, and also to recognize the changes that are happening on the ground with respect to short-term rentals generally.
Commissioners, I did have a chance to read through these recommendations, and I'm comfortable with them, depending on what your levels of comfort are.
I have a, a couple of things that I'd like to address, Commissioner Hopps. In, uh, the first paragraph in, in A, uh, last line, uh, there is one word that would need to be changed. Occupancy of the property shall be deemed to include, not the HAA hall.
Oh, thank you.
Instead of shall.
I see that.
Good catch. And the other is, is, we, if we put this in place, because we've had that discussion and, and issues in regards to, uh, the Schofield area and short-term rental issue there. Can we come back and redefine an area that we would allow or disallow going forward as far as those go?
Yes, you can. You wouldn't be forever tied to granting them everywhere. You, you could later then restrict them.
The second one is, is that, um, I would, I would think, and again, I would need clarification, that with short-term rentals, that it would not only be the transient room tax, but there is also in, in our hotel properties and, and so forth. They collect the state sales tax, and also the transient room tax. Again, I know we're talking about the, the county and unincorporated areas, but there are also other taxes as prescribed by the State Tax Commission that are collected by cities and/or counties, resort-type taxes, city-type taxes, recreation-type taxes that are attached to those lodging entities for their responsibility to collect and then submit them. And so I think that that's one change that we should definitely, um, investigate and provide maybe clarification into, and make that, uh, make that one of those that is required to pay all and any taxes as prescribed by law, and/or, uh, in addition to that, anything that would be adopted by the county. Those were, that was the only things that I had, Commissioner Hopps.
Okay. You know, I haven't, I didn't have anything else in regards to that as far as questions. Um, it seems like a, a good approach to start with, and we, we might see with legislation or with what other cities and, and counties are doing, that we might wanna change something in the future, but I think this is a great place to start.
So if we approve this or make a motion on it, Christian, uh, if I made that with those changes I suggested, would we wanna go ahead, or would you prefer that we let you bring that back?
I think you can go ahead and make it subject to those changes that seem fairly minor.
I, I'll go ahead and make that motion then, uh, in regards to approving ordinance number four oh nine, uh, with a spelling correction, and also to look into and make sure that all taxes are included in that ordinance for collection.
Great.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number nine, consideration of possible, consideration and proposed amendments to section five of the Carbon County, uh, Development Code and possible adoption of ordinance four ninety-one. Todd Thorne.
And Commissioners, uh, I'll let Todd speak to this, but as you know, we reviewed those substantive changes last time. Uh, you agreed to those. The only problem, I believe, was that we did not set those forth as, um, as an ordinance to amend the, the Development Code. So that's what this, uh, we've now announced it and advertised it as a, a proposed changed by ordinance.
So there's nothing new, other than giving it an ordinance number. So it's, uh, for a conditional use, uh, permit process, um, changing it to have the planning commission be the land use authority to approve all large-scale industrial projects. And the smaller projects, um, would be, it would be allowed me to sign off on those conditional use permits. Such things as, uh, smaller, uh, businesses, industrial zones that, um, like mine belt repairs and, you know, small, uh, projects, I'd be able to sign off with, um, the caveat of being able to publish those in the, in the newspaper if I sign them, and, um, go from there, so. If there's any other questions.
Pretty much everything we went over last time. We just didn't advertise it or have an ordinance number ready.
Correct.
And ju- just by way of review, we did modify it to provide that large-scale projects, um, will, uh, require a public hearing. We also modified it to provide that, uh, if the zoning administrator approves something, he's to, he's to publish notice of it, and that triggers a time for an appeal. Otherwise, if, uh, the person doesn't wanna wait for notice to be given in the newspaper, he can have it heard by the planning commission, and so it'll be on an a- a ge- an agenda that's sent to the newspaper, and public notice will be given that way. So, uh, all actions taken will be, there will be some form of public notice, um, made.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve that ordinance.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Um, review of possible approval of an amendment to Country Hollow subdivision plot located at two, two thousand five twenty-three South, six hundred West in Price, Utah, Rodney Jackson.
Well, I thought Rodney was your bodyguard, Tom.
Yeah, sometimes I feel like I have to bring backup, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, Mr. Jackson here, um, is proposing a subdivision amendment. Um, it's in your packet. It's really cleaning up, um, property lines. Um, there's a, there's a property from Mr. Shepherd. He has since passed away. Um, Mr. Jackson is the power of attorney for Mr. Jackson, so he's carrying out those wishes, and they're uh, just cleaning up property lines. Because it's in a subdivision, Mr. Jackson's part, we have to amend it because he's bringing property into it. Um, other than that, it's just, it's been surveyed, um, staked out, and, and adjusted, and meant through planning commission. If they didn't have any questions, um, so it's come before you guys for possible approval.
I think we should point out too that this, uh, amendment to the subdivision doesn't affect, it does not affect any other property owner's boundaries within the subdivision. This is a, a couple of parcels already owned by Mr. Jackson. And then the other property that's, uh, affected by it is a property that borders another subdivision, but it doesn't affect, it doesn't cause a change to the other subdivision, and it only changes property boundaries of property owned by Mr. Jackson himself. And I, as far as I'm aware, we haven't received any opposition to that from any other, uh, subdivision, from any other owners of property within that subdivision.
No, I haven't received any comments.
Okay. Okay.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the amendment to the Country Hollow subdivision plot A.
Yep. I'll go ahead and second that. Appreciate you, uh, coming before us and letting us make that decision.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was almost.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yep.
Item number eleven, presentation of possible approval of the two thousand eighteen tax advisory board recommendations. Jay.
You know, Commissioners, each year we have the tax advisory board meet, and they did so on December twenty-first. Uh, they had a total of eighteen applicants, uh, apply for advertising dollars through the travel office of tourism totaling over fifty-nine thousand dollars. We had set a budget there of thirty thousand, and they have sent, um, their recommendations to us, and they are in, uh, particular order. So I think you've had an opportunity to review not only the list, but also the applications. And so I think it would be appropriate for me just to read those in, and then if there is any discussion, um, we can have that prior to approving it. Once we approve it, it would allow the applications, the formal contracts to be, uh, drawn up, and for each of these organizations or groups to be able to move forward with their advertising into the outside, uh, yeah, outside of, uh, our local area. The whole idea of this is not only to provide the support, uh, to continue these activities, but more than anything to advertise and bring outside people in. Uh, these monies are, of course, generated through the two funds, uh, the of the TRT, the transient room tax, and then also the restaurant tax. So, let me just read those in very quickly. Desert Thunder Raceway, uh, they put nine thousand dollars there, stipulating that that is up to three thousand dollars per race. Uh, the second item was, uh, included two tournaments. Uh, we have the Babe Ruth Regional Tournament this year, and also the Cal Ripken, uh, Regional Tournament. Both of those were awarded two thousand dollars or suggested. East Carbon Community Days in signage, two thousand dollars. Helper Arts Festival, Car Show Burnout, a thousand dollars. Castle Country Stock Dog Trials for two thousand dollars. Castle Gate Posse for one thousand dollars. Helper River Restoration for one thousand dollars. Black Diamond Golf Tournament, three thousand dollars. Uh, Mammoth Marathons, which is two, uh, marathons for a total of fifteen hundred dollars, seven fifty to the Crandall Canyon, and seven fifty to the Little Grand Canyon. On the stipulation that they work with the local hotels for promotion, and do plan for a packet registration pickup, uh, day before the event. Next item was, uh, Century Ride for five hundred dollars. Uh, the next one is Dirty Arts Fondue for five hundred dollars, and the Helper Project for two thousand dollars, totaling the thirty thousand dollars. That's what they have forwarded to us as a, as a motion. Any questions or concerns that I can try to address with any of those Commissioners? Hope.
I don't have any concerns. I think it's a wonderful opportunity that many of these local businesses can, can benefit from the, uh, travel and tourism tax dollars because they bring in people from out of the area.
I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve, uh, the list as presented to us from the tax advisory board.
And I'll second your motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All, uh, approval? Or motion to approve?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks. My mind went blank there for a second.
It's all right.
We're good. Item number twelve, review and possible adoption of a resolution to fill vacancies on the county boards. Commissioners, we have a couple of county boards that we've received more applications for. Um, we'll just go through those. We have the, first, the Career Service Council. There are four vacancies. And we have two applicants, Stacy Jones and Ed Chavez.
I'd make a motion to go ahead and approve those applications to the Career Service Council.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, Planning and Zoning Commission, um, Christian, have we made those changes yet?
No, so we don't have anything to approve tonight. And then on the previous one, was one of those just to be an alternate on the Career Service Council? I think Ms. Jones wanted to only be a, be considered as an alternate.
She's the current alternate, right?
Right, and I think she wants to remain just as an alternate.
That's correct from her application. Let me back up and amend my motion then to accept Stacy Jones as the alternate, and Ed Chavez as the new applicant to fill one of those four vacancies.
We have an amended motion.
And I will second the amended motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, we, we don't have anything to take, um, any action to take on, on the planning commission. And we'll continue to hold the applications until the changes are made with the planning commission.
Should we read in the new names, the new applicants? We carried three over, but we do have three new ones.
Yeah, that would be great, I'll, I'll go ahead and read all those in. Tom Paluso was, had already applied, Carrie Van Dyke had already previously applied. Spencer Lovelace was a, a previous applicant. The new applicants are Kirk McFarland and Gary Taylor.
And.
And I have one more.
Third one, Lenita Popolovic.
Oh, Lenita Popolovic, that's right.
At least that's written on, on my sheet for tonight, so.
It came in.
After it was printed.
Right. Um, the next board that we have is the Tourism Tax Advisory Board. We need one more applicant from industry to be able to fill another seat outside of the industry. We did receive one more applicant. Let me go ahead and read all the applicants in, we have Mark Jespersen from Bicycle Works, Jennifer Jensen from the airport, Nick Tatten from Price City. And the new applicant is Athena Robinson from National Line Quality, Qualified Industry.
Having, having reviewed the statute on this, the minimum we can have is a total of, a board of five. We appointed two from industry last time, Commissioner, if you remember. And so if we appoint Athena Robinson from, Robinson from the National Line, we could also appoint two of the others to go with that. Just, I'd had that opportunity to review it as I was looking at these other tax applications, so. Just wanted to add that. Athena has served on that before and would be a great representation from industry there. That'd give us two of the hotels and one food service.
Okay.
Do we need to appoint these individually or can we do a, a motion that includes the qualified individual and the other?
So who would be the non-industry appointees then?
Two, two of the three other applicants.
Okay, so yeah, you, I think you need to do those individually then. Because you have to have a majority, right, who are from industry?
And, and we would, if, if we appointed Athena tonight, we'd have three from industry and we could appoint two others.
Okay.
So can we do that all in one, one?
I, I think you can do that in one motion.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to appoint Athena Robinson as our industry qualifier as well as Mark Jespersen and Jennifer Jensen.
We have a motion?
I'll go ahead and second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I might add, Commissioner Hopes, if I could, that this board could be expanded if we did get one more.
Industry person?
Industry person, we could certainly add one more, a non-industry person to, to that board.
There, there needs to be a minimum of five with a, a, a greater majority of, of industry. Is there a limit on how many, like, can there only be seven or can there be a larger board?
Up to nine, I believe is what the statute reads as the max.
With, again, a majority of industry representation?
Correct.
Okay. Item number thirteen, consideration of possible approval of Emery County Sanitation LLC as a solid waste disposal contractor for commercial waste in Carbon County. Uh, Christian.
Commissioners, uh, our, our waste disposal ordinance has a specific provision in it that says that if you want to be a commercial solid waste carrier or remover within our county, uh, you have to be county approved, you have to be approved by you. And Emery, Emery County Sanitation LLC already has a business license to operate within the county. They just would like to be approved by you formally by motion. I'd make, I'd just point out that this is not, this does, would not authorize them to haul residential waste because there's a contract with city sanitation providing for all of that. Uh, so that's an exclusive contract. This would just allow them to provide with who they wish for, commercial waste carrying. And you may want to consider whether or not you want to formally, whether we want to continue this kind of formal requirement that they be approved by you or whether you want to simply allow them to be approved by, uh, simply by getting a, a business license. Is, wouldn't that be enough to allow them to operate? Um, I don't know that, there aren't any special requirements you're required to impose upon them or to check into. You certainly could do such things, but I question whether you want to continue to have that a formal part of your ordinance to require special approval from you to be a commercial waste carrier.
One question I had on this is, um, your definition of a commercial user. Does that include home-based businesses that could potentially be municipal's waste as well?
That's a really good question. You know, I, my thought would be as if they are, that's one of the off-site impacts that's to be considered when you're looking at whether someone isn't, is an off-site, uh, is a home-based user. So my thought would be that if they, the assumption would be that they would still have to use a residential. If they're getting the exemption, I think they would still have to use the, pay for the residential use. If their use is such that they would require a contract with a, with a commercial waste carrier, their use probably is beyond that, that allows them to have the home-based exemption.
So there's, there's probably two steps that I've seen this. One would be to approve them as a carrier of the waste and then maybe the second is to go down that road of changing.
Right.
Make a recommendation that we amend the ordinance in the future. So let me make that my motion, that we go ahead and approve, excuse me, Emery County Sanitation as a solid waste disposal contractor and also put this on our agendas going forward to go ahead and look at that change and perhaps looking formally at those other things that Commissioner Hopes has asked in home base versus, uh, commercial.
We have a motion?
I'll go ahead and second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I just wanted to ask, so do we want to continually, continue to do this going forward or did we decide that it was sufficient just having the business license review?
Well, I don't think you can make that change until we amend the ordinance. So I think you have to keep doing this going forward until the ordinance is changed.
So that was, that was what you explained.
If I understand Jay's motion correctly, it was to bring this back to be able to change the ordinance if we so choose.
After we've properly advertised it and, and looked at it.
Correct.
Alright, so my second still stands.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number fourteen, review and possible consideration of a lease agreement for new Seventh District Courthouse building between Carbon County and Administrative, Administrative Office of the Courts. Christian, I don't believe we have that contract back, so.
We don't, no, I haven't seen it.
We can just have a motion to table until we have the contract.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to table, uh, that lease agreement until we have it back to review.
We have a motion?
And I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number fifteen, consideration of possible approval of a memorandum of understanding between Utah Department of Corrections and Carlin County Sheriff for electronic access to sex offender registry offender watch database.
Commissioners, this is simply a, a two-page agreement that indicates that the county agrees that, um, well, the sheriff's office really agrees that they will use the, the database for the authorized purposes. And it doesn't cost us any information as far as I'm, as far as I can see to access the database. Uh, it indicates conditions under which, uh, um, the county might have to indemnify the state if there's any improper use of the database. But I have no problem with it, uh, given it's, uh, I know the sheriff's office is, has been very particular in how they use this and how they access it and there've never been any incidents. And my understanding of talking to some of the deputies is this is a very helpful tool at times, so.
May, may I ask, how, how is this different from what the public has access to as far as the sex offenders database?
I think this shares all their information, everything that they have.
Okay, so what's available to the public is limited as far as what this contains?
And it's very restricted, there's only certain people in your office that have access to the information?
That is correct.
Okay.
Well, um, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve.
We have a motion?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number sixteen, review and possible approval of a work agreement with Rocky Mountain Power for the installation of a new meter and power pole at Wata substation. Um, Commissioners, I've been working with Barry on this and sending the information along. I, uh, we got this contract from Rocky Mountain Power, uh, this week, I believe, to do the work. This is to, um, upgrade the substation in, at Wata's that feeds the Star Point Communication Site. We, we also have a contractor in place that will do the other work that will go from that substation to Star Point. This is just Rocky Mountain side of, of the line. And then the contractor will take it from there. Do you have any questions?
I don't, we've reviewed this in, in the past, um, just waiting for an agreement so that we could approve it, so I don't.
The, this was budgeted for in twenty-seventeen and then rolled forward to this year because of the length of getting the contracts in place, but we're, we're happy to report it's there now, so.
My only concern with the Commissioners is it, it does say it requires a balance paid immediately of ten thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars, but there's not a promise to begin construction immediately, which is kind of frustrating, but I think that's kind of how things go and I think construction generally does happen fairly soon, but you're not guaranteed that it's going to start immediately and the estimated cost is valid only for ninety days. So, if construction doesn't get rolling within ninety days, that balance, the price could change on us.
Could it change or does that deposit solidify the co- the, their, the amount?
It doesn't solidify it that I see, it says estimated cost is valid for ninety days from the agreement date.
We, we have Deb Doll from Rocky Mount Power, if she'd like to address that. I don't know if she's, she has the authority to address that, but she might be able to help clarify.
Weather permitting, of course, right?
Yes, well, um, yes.
It's been great weather for doing this kind of a project.
Yes, it is. Well, as you said, the ninety days really is the fact that usually if we hand out a contract and after ninety days it has not been solidified, there may be changes. But that is, um, as I understand it, we are not saying that we're not going to get this done in ninety days. We, we try and schedule these actually within two to three weeks after.
And that's been my experience, they do get done quick, but there's always that chance that if you, if it doesn't get to, if you can't get to it, the price may change.
I, I.
It's a possibility, by the way, the contract's written.
Okay, by the way, the contract's written, but I do not know of us doing that, so. But I can't speak to the, the verbiage in the contract to see. And we will, and as we know, we are working closely with your contractor, so. If there's a question on the verbiage, whatever you decide.
No, I, I just want the Commissioners to know, that may or may not be the final price, it probably is the final price, um, but there's always a chance it could, it could change.
I was just going to ask you that, Deb, that, again, you know, the way the dollar amounts put in there and then it, you know, does talk about it, again, maybe this is outside of what we're trying to do, but that there'll be no other charges or refunds, um, for the above specified work. So even though it's worded funny there, I'm wondering if that ten thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars is a firm price?
And, and, um, I consider it and the company consumes, considers it a firm price.
Perfect.
Once we receive that, it's put into the system and that is what the cost of the job is.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thanks.
Thanks for being here.
You're most welcome.
Commissioners, have you had an opportunity to review this contract?
I have.
I have.
Any other questions?
I have none. Go ahead and make the motion to approve.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Item number seventeen, approval of amendment designation of new disadvantaged biz- business enterprise DBE. I'm not sure who's handling this one.
So Commissioners, this is, uh, good work by Rita to catch the fact that our, uh, as listed, uh, as you recall with the, some of our FAA grants, we are required to, um, set up a DB, a disanage, disadvantaged business enterprise liaison officer uh, who will, um, who's willing to work with disadvantaged businesses if they want to come into the area or work with the airport. Uh, this is something we're required to have, to have airport, to get airport grants and Rita caught the fact that, uh, the one listed now is not currently employed by the county. So we need to name a new individual to be our, um, our liaison for disadvantaged business enterprises that may want to look into business opportunities with the county or in the county. So you may want to, that, that's, basically we have to just have somebody, a name on record, on file so that when those calls, if such a call comes in, we can hook that person up with our county, our person at the county.
You know, Christian, since, uh, I'd asked you some questions on it earlier and have had some thought. Um, I'm wondering again if this is a good place to land within planning and zoning where it does talk about, uh, you know, enterprise areas and, and zoning. Um, I don't see it as being laboring, uh, intensive. Of course, Javation has been very good to work with us through these processes as they come, but Commissioners, I'm, I'm wondering if that would be an okay place. I have not talked with Todd concerning that at this point in time. But it would make sense to add that to our planning and zoning process.
I think so, since they, they're generally kind of the first ones among us to know what's coming into town often. Uh, what new businesses are coming in, what business licenses are being applied for that require some, uh, special approval. So, seems like it would make sense, I think.
Right, I, uh, sitting on the Planning and Zoning Committee completely agree. And of course, if there is an economic development aspect of that, then obviously planning and zoning is directly accessible to that department, so, um, I like the way we're heading in that direction.
And it's not something that obviously we can't change down the road if we find that there's a better fit for that. But my motion then would be to, um, appoint Todd Thorne with planning and zoning as that designated liaison for the DBE program.
And I'll second your motion.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number eighteen, annual disco- disclosure of conflict of interest pursuant to UCA seventeen dash sixteen A dash six.
Commissioners, I've given you a form on which you can make the conflict of, the annual conflict of interest disclosures which are required by statute to be made, uh, each year. They're actually required to be made by all elected officials. So what I would ask that you do, uh, tonight is approve the form if it looks good to you. Uh, and then those conflict of interest disclosures are kept on file per statute in the, uh, office of the legislative body of the county, which is the commission's office. So Rita would keep those per statute. Um, the disclosures required to be made, I want to be real specific on this. They don't require you to disclose every actual business interest you might have. Uh, section six requires you to disclose business interests that you have in businesses that are actually regulated by the county. Now, there's no statutory guidance as to what it means to be regulated by the county. Some might argue, well, that means if you get a business license from the county, then you're being regulated by the county. I would argue that I don't think a court would find that that means you're being regulated by the county. I would think to be regulated by the county, you'd have to have an interest in some kind of business that received something like a conditional use permit. Or perhaps, uh, we saw tonight, if you were a garbage collector, commercial garbage collector, you require. You require approval, special approval from the commissioners or somebody else, then you might have an interest, then that might be a business. Which would be regulated by the county, so under section six, if you're an employee, agent or officer in a business. That is regulated by the county or you have an ownership interest. That exceeds ten percent or a family member has an ownership interest in such a business in excess of ten percent, then. You're required to make a disclosure of that, the other disclosure you're required to, to make is any. Personal interests or activities which present a direct or potential conflict of interest with your public duties. So I put lines on there for you to make that disclosure, finally, I've also put lines on there for you to disclose any. Business interests that you might have in any business that does business with the county. You're, and the, the specific requirement there by statute is that. If you have an ownership interest in a business that does business with the county or may do business with the county. You're especially required to disclose that in any public meeting prior to discussion of the business. Prior to any discussion pertaining to that business and the county, so for example, if one of you owned a. Contracting business and the county was considering using that business as services, you would need to actually disclose that in the meeting. During the meeting in addition to this disclosure paper, so I, I would ask that you put those on file so they can be viewed by the public as necessary. And if you approve the form, I'll circulate that form among the other elected officials of the county and we'll make sure that's on file. With Rita and we'll just, we just need to do that every January per statute.
I did have one question in regards to the form that you had drafted, I mean, there were three or four lines available for different business entities. If for some reason somebody had more than that, would you have a addendum or an exhibit or something?
I think you can just list those on a separate page and again, you're not requi, I've also listed a section there where you can. Disclose other information that you think might be relevant, in other words, I think it's very possible that there are. Persons who are elected officials in the county who have businesses, but those businesses aren't regulated by the county. And those businesses don't do business with the county.
And aren't a conflict.
Right, and they're not a conflict and disclosure of those businesses is not required, however. There may be elected officials who say, well, I know it's not required to disclose that, but I want to do it just to get it on the table, just so. If anybody has a question, they can, it's there, I was never trying to hide that. And again, that's, that's at the option and discretion of the elected official, not all business interests, you don't have to. Disclose all business interests if they don't follow under these statutes.
Thank you for responding to that question.
I'll make a motion to approve the form and let it be circulated to all the elected officials and. Return, they do need to be notarized and returned to the commission office to be put on file.
Thanks, commissioners.
And I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number nineteen, update on status of recommendations from the state auditor's office for, for the county. Just for the general information of the public, in the last commission meeting of December, there were some recommendations brought forward by different. There was a committee and also some of the individual. People of the county, as a follow-up to that, we want to give you a review of where we are on those recommendations. Give this a second before we get pulled up. This, the recommendations come from the state auditor or a member of the state auditor's office coming down. Because of some allegations, he did a, a review of some of our finances and found that there was no, nothing in error. But he did have some recommendations to possibly help improve our. How do I put this, improve our face to the public and help make things more available to the general public. And also improve our budgeting process. Can you dim the lights? The first recommendation from the state auditor's off, office was to establish a regular review of financial reports. We sat down with the clerk's office, the treasurer's office, and we came up with a meeting date that will happen every month. We have a date set. That we will sit down and review the financials and we did that today for the, for the first time. There we go. Uh-oh.
We don't wanna wait for updates, do we?
No. Thank goodness I T just jumped back in. I, I thought I told you to go home.
Oh, that one.
I would've never looked there.
It's broken.
Honest, I only pushed an arrow.
That's what you do. Alright, thank you.
The second recommendation was to consider adding fund or cash reserve balances to the budget document each month. The response to that is each month, the commission, treasurer and clerk auditor will meet to review those financial reports. Seth is currently working on splitting out those cash amounts, that's also part of another recommendation that will happen later. Item number three, develop a method to ident, identify and measure municipal services in the unincorporated areas. This is an ongoing discussion on how to measure this. The reason why this would happen is some of the sheriff's office, some of their responsibilities, not all of it, is in the general fund. Meaning happens everywhere, but some of those services happen specifically in the unincorporated parts of the county as well as fire contracts. Our fire contracts, we pay specifically for the unincorporated parts of the county, so we're working on developing a methodology. Of, of saying we have this many emergency calls in the county or calls for the sheriff's office. So this is going to be an ongoing discussion, discussion as we, as we try and figure out. How we want to allocate money from either the general fund to the municipal services fund for those services. Or back from the municipal services fund, back to the general fund for whatever services are given to the other fund. Just for general knowledge, those, those monies. Have to be separated and you have to show through a formal process if you're going to move money from a general fund to the municipal services fund or vice versa. You have to show legitimate use of those funds being transferred and that they're being used specifically for what they're allocated for. Did you have anything to add to that, Seth?
No.
Item number four is reconcile all cash accounts within thirty days, this recommendation is being reviewed by the clerk auditor. He is currently working on all these recommendations, most of these recommendations are handled by the clerk auditor's office. And have oversight by the commission and the treasurer's office, so Seth is furiously working on, on all of these recommendations. Item number six is create a general ledger account for each bank account, general ledger accounts have been created for five of the corresponding bank accounts. You may have more done at this point, this, I, I gathered this information last week, but within additional count ledgers to be created still. So that, that is no easy task, it's not like you can just say, here's the fund, you have to create separate accounts and, and then formally set out all the ledgers. And it takes a fair amount of time. Item number six, and this was the final recommendation, is consider restating the twenty sixteen statements, the financial audit. This can be found on the county website and this was completed on December thirteenth before. The last two commission meetings in December, that was restated and is available for review by the general public.
Might, might add that those, that restatement involved funds that needed to be transferred from our. P T I F accounts or restricted funds to reflect expenses that had occurred during that year. But had not been formally moved from the, the cash account to that expense, to cover that expense as they were paid out of the general fund. So that, that has been done and those pages have been corrected and added to that county audit.
Commissioners, if I, if I could add, these were recommendations from the state auditor's office. When it said, consider a, a monthly review with the commissioners is because they felt like. Communication could be improved between offices, it was not that no communication was happening. When it said, make sure that accounts are reconciled within thirty days, it does not mean that accounts were not reconciled. Had that been the findings, there would have been significant deficiencies or material weaknesses identified by the state auditor's office. These were recommendations which were management comments saying, we think, you know, you've, you've passed muster, but if you want to improve, if you want to help. People understand things better, these are some suggestions we have to you, none of these items as recommendations would have been enforceable or required to be done. They were done voluntarily by the county to try to improve the transparency for the county. Even the, the reissuing of the financial statements, they provided a letter saying, even though. Your financial statements do present fairly from everything we've looked at. If you would like to restate this to be able to clarify the county's intent, we don't have a problem with you doing that, it wasn't a. You must do this, it was to try to clarify things, to try to make people understand the county's situation and. Another item that, that, you know, in prior meetings we've talked, the first part of the letter, there was a lot of emphasis over the letter from. The state auditor's office, but the first part of the letter is the part that everyone seems to have jumped over which stated. We recognize that the county is having financial difficulty due to decreased revenues. They came through and they looked at the financial situation of the county and they recognize the problem that we've tried to state and tried to explain. It is a problem, they recognize that as a problem, they've tried to provide some recommendations to help us present that to the public, but. If you, for, for those that think that there is no problem, that everything is fine and that there's, there's a big smokescreen going on. The, the situation that we have is, it's a real situation, it needs to be addressed and it's being addressed. The recommendations are just that, to try to help people understand what's going on better. And, and that, that's the, the important part that I think everybody needs to understand. We, we are trying to, to work through the problems that we have and show it in a public light, if people have. Questions with regards to any of the recommendations, they want to talk. Our offices are open, we can, we can talk through and go through those things, but. I wouldn't say that it's a doom and gloom, these are horrible things that the county has done wrong, they are recommendations.
I'd like to point out that Seth has really identified a lot of important things to, to put into context. And I'd also like to point out that these best practices that have been shared with us, I find very refreshing. And today's conversation that we held in review of. The budget over the last month and of course, the year-end budget, I think will help us open those bands of communication. And have, have these conversations frequently every month and that it will lead towards a much more productive and. Ongoing conversation that we need to have as a county so that we can run the county i- i- in a like manner of a business as much as we can be in government.
Thanks for that presentation.
Okay, we're at the end of our meeting, commissioners, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned, thank you for coming.